Welcome back and welcome folks in the gallery here today. Mr. Dehaney, our first order of business.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request of several members of the city council, we're going to have ECSC come and provide a background of the ECSC Surf Championship and also put forward a request requesting support for their festival. So at this time, we're going to be joined by Tony Polino of East Coast Surfing Championship to come and give council a quick overview of their program.
Hey, welcome, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson, and the Honorable Members of Council. I come before you today on behalf of the Virginia Beach J.C.'s and the Virginia Beach J.C.'s Charities, our 501(c)(3). Collectively, we are the J.C.'s, and we are humbly requesting $75,000 in city support for our biggest community service project. To give you a quick brief on the J.C.'s, please welcome VBJ.C.'s charities president, Lisa Augusto, and past Virginia Beach J.C.'s president, Chiquita Clark Thompson, both of which are past ECSC chairwomen.
Welcome.
Thank you. Our chapter of the Virginia Beach J.C.'s is a chapter of JCI, Junior Chamber International. So the J.C.'s are an international organization. And we are also in part then part of JCI USA. It's a worldwide network of future leaders. And our chapter's mission is to provide leadership development opportunities that empower young people to create positive change. In our foundation specifically, our mission is to combat community deterioration and juvenile delinquency by fostering sports competitions, engaging in community service projects, and providing education for individuals on personal and civic responsibility and business skills. The Virginia Beach J.C.'s was chartered in Princess Anne County in 1948. And through that, we were able to be part of a lot of projects and a lot of things within the community. We have been a founding member or a founder of the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad in 1951, the Community Library System in 1957 and 58, General Hospital of Virginia Beach in the 59 and 60, and the POW MIA Flame of Hope in 1972.
Now, if we're speaking about our current projects, we host the barbecue for the brave, which directly benefits the Flame of Hope POW Memorial. We also sponsor the Christmas Shopping Tour, which provides dozens of families with Christmas presents and a great time. And of course, the East Coast Surfing Championship, of which runs our 62nd year. I want to speak personally about how the J.C.'s and ECSC have affected my life. It's because of this organization and events like that that I've gained the experience to not only start two successful businesses right here in the city of Virginia Beach, but I've also become a commissioner on several boards within the city, and I serve on six other nonprofit boards. I started as a simple ECSC volunteer, became president of the J.C.'s locally state, and now I'm an international commissioner for JCI. That's 150,000 young people across this globe. So ECSC has personally affected me, and it has changed the trajectory of my life, and for that, I will forever be grateful.
Thank you, ladies. To give a brief history of the ECSC, please welcome two of our three all-women co-chairs for this year's 62nd Annual Coastal Edge ECSC, Ms. Lindsay Peard and Jessie Cox.
Thank you, Tony.
Welcome, both of you.
Thank you for having us. In 1962, the East Coast Surfing Carnival was held in Gilgo Beach, New York, shortly after a group of local surfers reached out to the J.C.'s and asked for help to properly organize a surfing contest for the entire East Coast. In 1963, the first East Coast Surfing Championship was held right here in our own backyard, Virginia Beach. Each year at the end of August, hundreds of surfers, spectators converge at our shores to crown the East Coast best surfer. This grew into West Coast competitors wanting in on the action and is now it's worldwide. In the 1970s, different elements of entertainment were added to the surf contests, including music and the Miss ECSC bikini contest, both of which are, continue today, celebrating beach culture and the good life Virginia Beach has to offer.
Over the decades, ECSC has faced hurricanes, tornadoes, earthquakes, and most recently, the global pandemic. The J.C.'s worked diligently with our previous general manager, George Akraz, and past chairman Tony Polino to create a comprehensive plan to keep public safety the top priority while still running a great event. In 2020, we officially became the longest continuously ran surf competition in the world, beating out Bell's Beach, Australia, and bringing that title home to Virginia Beach. Over the past decade, with Coastal Edge as our title sponsor, the ECSC has grown to amazing levels, attracting national sponsors and global attendance, expanding into our beach culture and action sports events. While surfing is still at our core, we have added beach volleyball, skateboarding, BMX, 5K fun runs, and local and national artists rocking out this all-week-and-long performances.
Thank you, ladies. Great job. Part of what we do is public speaking, too, so this helps us all. Thank you, thank you. ECSC is one of Virginia Beach's crown jewel special events that blends surfing, action sports, entertainment, and provides something for everyone. ECSC is an internationally known tourist event that draws thousands of visitors annually, and yet locals still can't get enough. Hundreds of volunteers sign up each year, from Navy sailors to families with kids. They all look forward to giving back in a fun way. Sold at eight coastal edge locations, the official ECSC t-shirt is iconic and one of the most popular shirts in the city. For 62 years, the ECSC has promoted Virginia Beach's surf and beach culture that brings people together and helps make Virginia Beach a year-round destination. ECSC is professionally ran, and our presence is year-round, with the money raised from the event going towards other J.C. programs like the Flame of Hope, Christmas Shopping Tour, and other Virginia Beach charities. The money raised remains in Virginia Beach economy and not transferred to another state or country. Our annual budget is consistently over $300,000, but yet we make it free to the public. Our Making Waves Initiative with our partners promotes environmental sustainability, coastal flooding awareness, and diversity inclusion to surf and skate. We certainly don't do this for the trophies, but we won several state and national awards from JCI USA for Most Outstanding Local Project and Greatest Economic Impact Project. Speaking on the topic of economic impact, the last event performed analysis that included ECSC was conducted in 2018 and presented in 2019. I think we can all agree that capturing every single dollar from every single local and tourist that comes to the special event at an oceanfront and to which category it is spent is almost impossible. The city's analysis is not perfect and has a margin of error, but it paints a great picture for our citizens and decision-makers. I'd like to briefly highlight a few data points, including ECSC having the highest tax revenue generated at over $1.1 million, with city contributions being one of the lowest of all the events at $28,000. This shows an amazing return on investment with minimal city funding. The city study shows out of nine special events, the greatest economic impact to our city came from ECSC at over $25.8 million. One reason that sets us apart from the other amazing events that are also very, very well-produced, I might say, is the fact that we're over seven days, with most visitors paying tax revenue on lodging, food and beverage, et cetera, over a longer period of time in Virginia Beach versus one weekend. Even with a 10%, 20% margin of error across the board, these are impressive numbers. Since we are talking about impressive numbers, I'd like to show you a report conducted by David Moskowitz at Virginia Beach, I'm sorry, at Video News Incorporated, an information monitoring company tracking television, internet, and radio throughout the United States. ECSC by the numbers. I wish I can say 1 billion was unique audience, but this is referencing total online impressions. Either way, it's a staggering number that reflects all the efforts conducted by the J.C.'s and each and every one of our sponsors, including the city, vendors, athletes, and spectators. Our event has gone viral. It's harder to achieve a huge audience via television without a monster budget, but we have strategic partners that provide amazing coverage at a great price, and 2 million is no small figure. You can see the ad and publicity value as well. Most articles, TV spots, and internet impressions make mention of the city of Virginia Beach, so our citizens certainly share in this value at the same time. The Virginia Beach J.C.'s have rarely asked for city support other than marketing. We graciously request similar considerations shown to us as with other events with a similar footprint in the city. We have presented and worked with the city manager, city staff, and members of council to find a win-win solution to help bring ECSC to the next level. The VBJ.C.'s are personally requesting only $75,000 for the purposes of enriching action sports and tourism. $65,000 of that would be allocated to a sanctioned World Surf League Qualifying Series 1000 pro surf contest. WSL is like the NFL of the surf world, and a QS 1000 is like the AAA baseball, like the Tides. You need to make it there first before you go to the big show. As an owner of VB Surf Sessions, Surf Shop, and Surf School for 14 years, I can personally attest to the power and importance of a WSL QS 1000 that it brings to our city. This is huge. Roughly 120 pro surfers fly and drive in from 10 countries and 11 states accompanied by personal coaches, content teams, parents, families, spouses. The comp period runs for five days, so naturally, they're going to stay longer than that. This is a force multiplying event, and we're going to title it "The Virginia Beach Pro", presented by the Coastal Edge ECSC, marketed officially amongst WSL, US, and global markets, reaching over 90 million total readership, and close to 1 million impressions on the WSL website alone. The breakdown of expenses includes sanctioning fees, pro judge fees, judge lodging, computer scoring, and operators, infrastructure scaffolding and tenting, branding, and $22,000 in total prize purse split equally amongst the men and women. An additional 5,000 will be requested and invested into our youth and beginner skateboard demographic as it continues to grow and align with our missions of the Virginia Beach J.C.'s charities, as previously stated. We would provide a mini half-pipe to produce clinics, coaching, and skate contests, attracting all those who aren't quite ready to ride that mega half-pipe, but really want to be in the spotlight. The remaining 5,000 is for the inaugural Virginia Beach Sand Sixes Beach Sand Lacrosse Tournament. Lacrosse is the oldest organized sport in North America, and it's growing in popularity in Virginia. We are adding Virginia Beach twist to the traditional sport by playing in the stand, modifying the fields and the rules. Funding will be used particularly to pay for the cost of signage, goals, officials, flags, scoreboards, and marketing. The remainder of the funding will be sponsored, will be by sponsors and our partners. This will feature local high school teams, clubs, and attract new layer of sponsors and visitors. The funding request has been made humbly and realistically. It is set up in the framework of the criteria set forth of the 90-day Festival Task Force, the CVB strategies, and the city council's goals and priorities. It supports enhancements to the overall event, creates ROI opportunities, and will increase tourism. In closure, we sincerely thank you. We'd like to thank the city manager, members of the city staff, including Nancy Hillman, Lisa Blakely, and Bill Kelly for giving us their valuable time and helping us navigate this process. They're an amazing team, absolutely. Lastly, thank you, Honorable Members of City Council, who were able to speak to us and our partners. We really appreciate that. And to all those who will give us consideration for this nonprofit, we sincerely thank you and hope you ride this wave with us this year. The J.C.'s and myself are available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Rosemary and Worth, and then Michael.
First, I want to say this is in District 5, and we're so excited. It's 62 years. It's longer than a lot of people at this table. So, I'm not...
Not all of them.
But not all of us. But I just want to thank you. Yeah, there's nothing like volunteerism, because you're here because you want to be, and you're doing this. It's in your heart to do this and to do good things, and that's what sets our city apart from a lot of other places, is the volunteerism. And what J.C.'s doing, and again, you take the money that you earn and you put it back into good things in the community. And we really appreciate what you do, and thank you for fighting the good fight and raising this up to another level. And I look forward to being there. I can walk down there.
VIP. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Hey, Worth, and then Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tony, and Virginia Beach J.C.'s for this effort and your past efforts. And so, just to clarify, Tony, just a couple things, just to be in the interest of transparency. So we, this is in addition to $25,000?
Yes, from Sports Marketing Department. That's been a long-running thing. It was created with George Akraz in that department. Yep, and that goes to marketing.
So that's, so that's great. So what I really like about this is that it's bringing another event, the world, Virginia Beach World Surfing Championship. What's the difference between ECSC and the world? I know it's, I guess it's pro versus, is it ECSC amateur?
ECSC is mainly amateur. We do run a pro section, which has a higher prize purse, and that does, the higher prize purse attracts better surfers from around the country. The WSL is, like I said, it's basically like the NFL. You need to serve a WSL qualifying series around the country, around the world, in order to gain points in a series that makes you number one. And then, once you become that, you then advance to the top of the world in the championship tour called the CT Tour. So yeah, it's something that we cannot provide alone. It is, it has to be sanctioned by the World Surf League.
Thank you. I think it's a great program and I support it.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to say, first of all, thank you to the J.C., Virginia Beach J.C.'s organization for all the work that you do to serve our community and that you have over time, the people, all the people that have come before you, and I know the people you're mentoring to come after you. I've had the chance to attend many J.C.'s events over the years, before I was a member of council and as a member of council, and I have seen firsthand the many different ways that your work has had a positive impact on our community. I think ECSC is a great example of that work, and a lot of people who are from Virginia Beach may not always make the connection. I know I didn't. I grew up in Virginia Beach, and the ECSC was, is a rite of passage for Virginia Beach residents. It's, it was the place to see and be seen when you were in high school, I know that much, and middle school, too. And although I was never a participant, it may come to be a surprise or not, in the, in the competition, I was there every year and got the t-shirt, and that was the thing to have when you went back to school in September.
That's right.
So that's, and the reason I'm bringing those things up is to just demonstrate how much a part of the authentic culture that ECSC is to Virginia Beach. Some of the things that I like about this proposal that you're doing, and I'll just name them. The first is, this is a legacy event, so 62 years of production in the city of Virginia Beach and integral to our culture, and we should be supporting those legacy events. We should be making sure they survive and thrive in our position to remain successful into the future. I think the body also knows that I believe we should be supporting the emerging events in Virginia Beach, too. And we're working with the Festival Task Force Committee and others to figure out exactly what's the best approach to do that, but we, we, we need to be supporting our legacy cultural events, and ECSC is one of them. Second thing about this that I really like is that the pro element is going to put Virginia Beach on a global map and global positioning, which our events are increasingly doing. And it's going to make Virginia Beach and this festival, from what I understand, you know, part of the global surf competition world, and that's a really great thing. And at the same time, your plan also includes mentorship and training for emerging action sports athletes.
Correct.
And that's an incredible element, too, because just as this festival is authentic to our, to our culture here, surf, skate, action sports is very much part of Virginia Beach culture, and I think what you're doing here is not only inspiring people to compete at the professional level, but also giving them a point of entry in the amateur level and, and helping them to enter the sport.
Absolutely.
That's really cool. So I think you've done a really good job here. I applaud you for keeping the torch alive for this festival, and I look forward to supporting this request, and I also look forward to what you will do in the future, and hopefully even explore different types of partnerships moving forward. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Barbara?
You mentioned the task force recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think it's important that we know where all of this, our action now fits in with that. You were just kind of caught in the in-between time before the task force recommendations came out and were able to set that up. But in the future, you will be using that process.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And I suppose as far as the follow-up to your event this year, you will be following up with the requirements that the task force would recommend for accountability and how the money was spent and so forth. But just to clarify that this is, the only reason this one is out of sync is because it got caught in the time crunch and before we were able to set the task force up and so forth. But this is a, you understand that, and you're perfectly willing to go forward with the task force recommendations in the future.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you're not the only one that's, has been operating for a number of years that now will need to go through this process. And yes, we will be looking for new ones, but it's not going to be a political thing. It's going to be that group that's going to work on the task force allocations and so forth, just so that we're all clear on why we're doing it out of sync and...
Yes, ma'am.
And your date is?
August 18th through the 25th.
Very good. And so the necessity to be able to know if the city was supporting in order to meet that timeframe is why we're doing this out of sync and just so the public understands. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony, thank you to everybody who showed up and supported your organization. I can't, I can't echo loud enough many of the things that have been said about the event. I'm not a surfer.
Yet.
I probably hurt myself pretty good, but I do look forward to attending. The one thing I just want to chime in and say is how appreciative I am and we are of your efforts to, you know, uplift young people and foster entrepreneurship in people who are 40 and under. So I have many fond memories of working alongside your organization when I was, when I was in an under-40, you know, professional organization myself. So keep up the great work, and thank you all for being here very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else at this point?
Yes, I will support a few, ma'am.
It's okay.
I am in support of this.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hey, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, in line with their requests, is council amenable with staff bringing forward ordinance to fund the...
Oh, is that you on there?
Yeah, for $75,000. Okay, anybody object?
You know, if I could just say, Tony, you know, thank you very much, and the only way I could, you know, ever surf with my flexibility is aboard, not necessarily a surfer, trust me. And let me just go back a couple of years ago, you know, when we were at the height of COVID. You know, we worked with the governor. We got our beaches open when a lot of folks weren't open. And as a result, you were able to grasp the record. And if I'm not, if I'm correct, that was what opened the door, that we got noticed with the pro tours starting to come in.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think, you know, that's mission critical. And, you know, dare I say, playing chess, not checkers, you know, when we have the opening, you know, of the surf park, which is now in sight, what we're going to have is the ability to surf year-round. And that is going to make us even more of a destination than we are now. You know, right now, Virginia Beach does have a stellar, you know, reputation of being a good place to come and surf. And then, you know, now all of a sudden, you know, this, yeah, I think, once that's open, you know, the value of what you're doing, even though it's great now, is going to be further enhanced there. So, you know, thank you all for your efforts and keep on doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you. Yeah, right. Indeed, pray for waves. We'll see you there. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll be joined by members of the school staff. Crystal Pate, the school CFO, will come and give council a presentation on their amended budget request that's going to come before you for consideration, and this is based on the funds that they've just recently received from the state.
Thank you.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of city council, Mr. Dehaney. My name's Crystal Pate. I am the Chief Financial Officer for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I'm here this afternoon to provide you information regarding an amended fiscal year 2024/25 budget for our school division. The request for additional funding for fiscal year 2024/25 before you today is a result of the final approval of the state budget on May 13th. We received a calculation tool from the Virginia Department of Education on May 29th. We presented this information to the school board on June 4th, and a resolution was approved on June 10th. In summary, the spending priorities of the general assembly remain mostly intact from their initial proposal. The state provided a 3% compensation supplement effective July 1st, 2024, for SOQ-funded instructional and support positions, and the state budget did not include the digital sales tax that had been proposed earlier in the state's budget process, which could have been a significant revenue source for school divisions. I make sure we do it. Make sure we do it.
It's not working.
Okay. So this slide shows how we get to our proposed amended budget for fiscal year 2024/25. It's an overview of the school division's revenue sources. In the first column, you'll see the figures for the proposed 24/25 budget as approved by school board and city council earlier in the year. The second column displays the projected revenue for the amended budget after receiving the state's final budget. Our original approved operating budget was for approximately $948.9 million. State revenue for us increased by $18.9 million, sales tax decreased by $2.8 million, and the revenue sharing formula with the city decreased a little over $200,000 due to the granting of the personal property tax grace period. So this resulted in a net overall increase in revenue of approximately $15.9 million and increasing the school division's overall budget for the operating fund to approximately $964.8 million. This next slide provides the recommendations for the $15.9 million in additional funding as approved by the school board. $13,45,540 is to provide a 2% increase in the entry rates for both the unified and instructional pay scales effective August 1st. With the July 1st adjustment and this proposed 2% entry rate adjustment effective August 1st, employees will see an increase between 3% and 3.5%. The salary increase range is due solely to the difference in step increases on our unified pay scale that differ between one and 14 years of service and 15 years and above. This is an issue we must try to address in future budget years. Excuse me. Please note, with the approval of this recommendation, the beginning salary for the instructional pay scale, meaning teachers, will be $54,065 for Virginia Beach. pay scale, meaning teachers, will be $54,065 for Virginia Beach. As we presented in our budget presentation earlier in the year, we remain challenged with employee compensation, which impacts our recruitment and retention of staff, especially instructional staff, as we compete with other localities. While we did make some progress based on the latest information obtained on where other divisions rank, Virginia Beach City Public Schools will now be in the last place in ranking for starting teacher salaries, even with this 2% increase to starting salaries compared to Norfolk, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, Hampton, and Newport News. We are also proposing $2 million to provide additional special education support. Academic performance for students with disabilities is of high concern to the administration. Over the past several years, we have seen significant turnover in special education teachers combined with an increase in students with disabilities and greater needs. This requires a substantial investment in adding additional support through training and staff. There is $650,000 proposed to provide one wellness day for benefit eligible employees in an allocated position. Two years ago, the school board made an excellent move by granting staff two wellness days, which can be used alongside their personal reasons or annual leave. The staff have expressed a deep appreciation for this acknowledgement. And lastly, the remaining $238,763 will be for instructional resources as needed. So that concludes the presentation on our amended budget proposal. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Rosemary?
So, um, school employees got a 2% raise in January, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this 2% plus the three, three and a half, so this year, annual year, they'll get like between five and five and a half percent.
So the 2% was effective January 1st of this fiscal year? And then for the proposed 24-25, they got one, they're getting step increases is what's been approved? And so depending on where you're at, if you're on the unified scale, one to 14 years, I think you get 1% step. On 15 and above, you get one and a half percent step. And then, of course, this is the 2% for, that's coming from the state now to give us the starting salary increases. So if you look at it in combined, yes, but those are the timeline for that.
Um, and after we, we did our reconciliation, Dr. Robertson wrote us all a letter saying that there were going to be certain cuts because they were not aware, were not aware of the state budget, which actually got passed the day before ours did. And there were cuts there that, um, is going to have an impact. Um, school buses, maintenance for landscape services, maintenance, central office temporary employment, reduction of, elimination of critical programs, and reduction of eight and a half central support positions. So have y'all chosen to?
When it was presented to board and I was, when it was presented to board with this additional funding, the priorities are as what was recommended and approved by the board. So those cuts are still in place.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Crystal, I think, when is this coming for council for consideration? Is it?
July 2nd.
July 2nd, okay. So city council will have this for your voting consideration on July 2nd. All right, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're going to have Emily LeBose, our Director of Cultural Affairs, going to come and give council a proposal for council's consideration based off your reconciliation action for creating a dedicated funding source for the arts. This is just an initial preliminary conversation seeking feedback and guidance. We're not asking council to make a final decision on the program at this time. This is just something for council to react to. And our hopes will be after getting council's feedback, we'll bring it back to you after your recess for further consideration.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. Um, I'm here to present some options for your consideration on the distribution of the admission tax to the arts. Wait to the next slide. We got it, Mari? Maybe I can do it. Here. We're here today to, like, as the city manager said, um, once I present the, the options for feedback and once you all are comfortable with the path forward, the plan will need to be formally approved by council. So the ask today is just guidance on the next steps and timing to present the ordinance. We're going to talk about the background and, and the ordinance that you all passed, um, this, the opportunities that this brings, some local options for funding, a possible funding breakdown, and some timeline considerations. So on May 14th, council passed an ordinance dedicating 20% of the admission tax to funding arts and culture. The decision allocates about $1.6 million to support our local arts community. The ordinance directs the city manager and the Department of Cultural Affairs to develop a plan for the use of the funds dedicated to the arts and culture. Here's the direct language from the ordinance. The city manager shall present such plan to the city council for the council's input. Prior to expenditure or distribution of funding for arts and culture from the dedicated reserve, the city council shall have formally approved guidance for the use of those funds. So here we are today to present you some options for the use of the funds for your input and approval. Virginia Beach has been pivotal in the history of music and the arts, making an impact on various music styles such as hip-hop and beach music as well as music production. Virginia Beach has a strong history and foundation in the arts with well-respected institutions like Virginia Mocha, culturally communities, talented artists, a growing public art program, a thriving arts and cultural district. But however, in the past, we've faced funding constraints that didn't allow us to adequately fund our arts, our arts organizations or support our local artists. Now, this funding presents a tremendous opportunity to make strategic investments in our local art scene. We can build on our rich musical history to become an incubator and beacon for creativity and culture on the East Coast. When creating these options, we were guided by the three initiatives, 3.11, 3.12, and 3.13, from your focus action plan. And the options speak directly to making those initiatives a reality. First, to guide our efforts, we looked at successful strategies from other cities. Miami and Miami-Dade County have transformed their arts and cultural landscape through strategic public investments, support for local artists, key cultural events, a robust public art program, state, state-of-the-art cultural facilities, an expansion of their cultural affairs department, and provide comprehensive grants to sustain local artists and organizations. Initiatives like the Wynwood Walls and Art Basel have elevated the city's global cultural status. Cultural tourism campaigns and the revitalization of districts like Wynwood and Little Havana have further boosted economic growth and community pride. Many of these initiatives, we're already starting to do in Virginia Beach. The Convention and Visitors Bureau has recently launched, um, some promotions highlighting our artists and artisans, and they have a strong partnership with the Vibe District to market the city. We also have wonderful venues and the Boardwalk Art Show as a key cultural event. So studying Miami's approach and adapting its strategies to fit our local needs and resources, Virginia Beach can create a thriving art scene, not only that enhances the cultural landscape, but drives economic growth and community development. We have focused, um, our strategies on four pillars from Miami's transformation: supporting local artists and bringing arts into neighborhoods, increasing public investment in cultural organizations, expanding public art, placemaking and programming, and additional staff to make these initiatives a reality. To operationalize these pillars, we've developed specific local funding options that I'll discuss after presenting national examples. These funding options are practical steps that we can take to implement our strategies and ensure our plan's success. They provide detailed and actionable programs and initiatives designed to bring each pillar to life, enhancing the vibrancy of our neighborhoods and strengthening our community bonds through public art. The first, support for local artists. Supporting local artists is crucial to nurturing a vibrant arts community. There are many multitude of examples of cities that provide many grants to artists. Each have their own criteria, their eligible and ineligible expenses, but there are common threads that run throughout. There are residency requirements, criteria for being considered, art form criteria, and most cities' grants range from 500 to 5,000 per grant. Another pillar, bringing arts into neighborhoods. Programs like Louisville's Arts in Neighborhoods Community Mini Grant Program brings art projects to local communities. Funded by the Fund for the Arts, it offers small grants to artists, community groups, and organizations for projects that make neighborhoods more vibrant and connected. The program supports creative and collaborative events and projects that involve the community and celebrate cultural diversity. By funding these local arts initiatives, the program aims to make art a part of everyday life in Louisville. Applicants can request funding of up to $5,000. Here are some of the, I thought I'd share some of the funded projects that they've funded in the past. One was the STEAM Exchange Fashion Show. It's a fashion show that highlighted the intersection of arts and education in a community-focused event. Louisville Story Program. This program received funding for the launch of a book titled, "If You Write Me a Letter, Send It Here," which took place at the Louisville Center Community, Central Community Center, which promoted, promoted local literacy talent. Another one was Safe Summer Community Kickoff Concert, which was organized by a local music band and a local African-American cultural organization whose mission is to amplify and accelerate the economic and equity transformation of Black and Brown communities. The concert aimed to promote positive change and address issues such as violence and drug use in the community through music and arts. Another example is PS You Are Here Grant, uh, was provided by Denver Arts and Venues. It supports community-led programs that activate outdoor spaces, fostering civic engagement, honoring heritage, beautifying neighborhoods, and enriching communities. Since its inception, inception in 2014, the program has funded numerous creative and impactful projects, one being Living Land Acknowledgements. Redline Contemporary Art Center created a collaborative, community-responsive artwork in the Five Points neighborhood that acknowledges the indigenous ancestral land of the area. This project aimed to strengthen residents' sense of belonging and placemaking. There was a memory mapping committee developed a project featuring podcast recordings from long-term residents displayed, displayed online and physically around the neighborhood as art pieces with QR codes. Another one was Edible Art Scapes Youth Initiative. Art Streets at Youth Employment Academy installed a garden, integrating art elements with mosaics, sculptures, and large textile flags designed by the young people. So here we are. So here are some local funding options for your consideration to really operationalize our strategic pillars and support our arts community effectively. These are just concepts and will need to be worked out in more detail with stakeholders, staff, the city attorney's office, the finance department, and potentially, hopefully, we'll have more creative names. The first is the Virginia Beach Individual Artist Mini Grant. This grant could be targeted at individual artists in the early stages of their career, provides financial support to help them develop and present new works. By investing in emerging talent, we aim to foster a dynamic and thriving local art scene. Second option is Love Your Neighborhood Projects Mini Grant. This grant supports arts and partnerships between artists and community organizations. The goal is to create short-term or one-time innovative and creative events that engage communities within Virginia Beach neighborhoods. These projects can enhance community cohesion, encourage cultural exchange, and bring the arts into everyday life. The third is Creative Community Art Activations Grant. Aimed at artists, arts collectives, and arts organizations, this grant supports the creation and installation of short-term art projects and art installations. The purpose is to bring vibrant temporary art installations to various cities within the city. The projects will enhance the aesthetic appeal, cultural vibrancy, and make our public spaces more dynamic and engaging. So to avoid overloading the Arts and Humanities Commission with, um, multiple new grant opportunities, uh, we're exploring the use of, um, panels, grant panels made up of a combination of staff and knowledgeable citizens to review the applications for these new categories. It's very common practice in cities throughout the country to use these, um, panels. The approach ensures a thorough and efficient review process. So integral into the success of these grants is having a dedicated staff person who can really offer personalized support to artists and cultural organizations. Our department doesn't have, right now, a dedicated staff person who is, who oversees grants and the grant process. To ensure the success of the new grant programs, we're proposing creating a new arts development and grants manager position within cultural affairs. This role requires a hands-on, time-consuming approach, providing personalized support to artists and cultural organizations. They will guide grant applicants through detailed application processes, project proposals, best practices, and organizational development to ensure the grant's potential is maximized. I envision this staff member making connections with both artists and community organizations like civic leagues, community centers, the civic, the council of civic organizations, guiding them to craft their project to make the most benefit from all participants. It's also, uh, this dedicated role is essential for maintaining compliance and transparency. The next strategic pillar is focused on the public investment in cultural organizations. Investing in cultural organizations is essential for a thriving arts ecosystem. Miami's Major Cultural Institutions Grant supports large organizations, ensuring that they continue to provide high-quality programming and cultural outreach. By providing sustainable funding, they can ensure our cultural, their cultural, cultural institutions remain strong and beneficial. An example closer to home, the city of Norfolk funds their largest cultural organizations through a tiered grant system. Local funding options. We propose increasing funding to the Arts and Humanities Commission to support their ever-growing number of grant applications. We've already been contacted by organizations which never have applied about the possibility of a new round of grants. As the commission chair, Dr. Romero, wrote in a letter to you a few months ago, she said, "These years, project grant application pool is one of the most diverse pools in terms of project format, venue, and target audience." Applicant organizations ranged from those solely by, run by volunteers to organizations with professional staffs. Those who present onstage, performance in beautiful Virginia Beach venues, on the lawn, in the classroom, small-scale engagements, initiatives promoting singing, dancing, spoken word, to educating with classical guitar and military history, and efforts fostering emerging artists and exposing youth to behind-the-scenes stage preparation and show management. The commission believes this increase in volume and quality of their project grant applications is due to the large part, it's the diligent effort of our commission to advance equity in the arts and culture through the city. However, we further believe that in this year's diverse project proposals, learning and joy are reflected of the growing need to have additional city funding dedicated to the arts and humanities to benefit all citizens. That was her letter. A new grant option is the introduction of a sustainability funding for major arts institutions. This strategic investment will bolster our large cultural organizations, enabling them to enhance their programming and highlight their cultural and economic. and highlight their cultural and economic impact to the community. This initiative will also free up the Arts and Humanities Commission to dedicate more time and resources to diverse community projects. By breaking out large organizations into a different tier of funding, we create a more equitable and effective distribution of resources, ensuring all facets of our arts community are can flourish. To enhance arts and our cultural vibrancy, we propose funding more public art and placemaking projects, as well as cultural programming throughout the districts. This can include murals, sculptures, programs, in high-traffic and underserved areas to reach our cultural diverse and diverse culture and heritage. These projects will make public spaces more inviting, celebrate our community's unique identity, and foster pride and belonging. The city's Public Art Committee and our department collaborate each year on an annual public art plan, incorporating possible projects and needs when we decide on where public art projects are going. These projects will invite neighbors to collaborate, interact, contribute to the artistic process, strengthening community bonds and enhancing cultural and social cohesion. Integral in the success of these new projects, we propose the addition of one public art staff person within the cultural affairs department. Public art projects are detailed and have many moving parts. If you move forward with funding new public art initiatives, a new public art position needs to be added to. This role will assist in managing the intricate coordination required for commissioning, installing, maintenance, to ensure the high quality and impact of the public art. By ensuring and overseeing collaborative projects involving multiple stakeholders, including artists, community organizations, and city departments, this position will ensure smooth operations and maximize the project's impact. So here we are at the proposed breakdown of the 1.6 million. 200,000 for grants to individual artists and the neighborhood projects. About 900,000 to arts and cultural organizations. 350,000 to public art programming. 166,000 for additional staffing, their computers, phones, furniture, all that they need to get started. So council is required, like I said earlier, is required, your approval to move forward with this plan. So based on your direction today, we can refine the options and come back to you for additional feedback or work to present an ordinance at the July 9th formal meeting. The Arts and Humanities Commission wanted me to remind you that they would love to know sooner rather than later because they will need to consider the grant funding and let the arts organizations know of their grant awards. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. It was a fantastic presentation. Very obvious that you put a lot of work and research and thought into this presentation, into this strategy that you and your team have developed, and I applaud you for it. I also just want to take a moment to thank the council and to thank all the staff who supported all the research and due diligence to get us to this point, and the community that stepped up and also supported this initiative. When we were contemplating the creation of this dedicated funding source, what we really were seeking to do is two things, I think. Two things in particular, there are others too. One is to support cultural organizations and creative expression in Virginia Beach. And two is to connect, better connect, communities, neighborhoods, and Virginia Beach residents through creative expression and culture. And I think this plan speaks to both of those goals very directly and very efficiently, and so I appreciate that very much. I think that you've checked all the boxes, starting with supporting individual and emerging artists. That was a priority for the community. And we heard from the arts community and cultural community that individual artists, emerging artists and talent were seeking to have that level of support. We were also interested in enhancing community collaborations between community organizations and artists and arts organizations, serve our community in ways that go even beyond creative expression. And I'll give you just one quick example. I'm working with NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness Coastal Virginia, on a program they're calling With Love. And a big part of that program is to raise awareness about mental health in Virginia Beach and coastal Virginia. And they're doing it through creative expression in the schools and working with artists to find ways to reduce stigma, to encourage people to seek the services that they need and to raise awareness about mental health. And they have determined that the arts and creative expression is a great way to do that. And so that's one, just one case study that I happened to be on a Zoom call about today that shows the power that arts and creative expression can have in serving communities. The other thing that it addresses is the establishment and support for public art. And I know that Mr. Walter Camp is sitting behind me, and he's been instrumental in a project in historic Kempsville. And I think, I think the folks who, and others have as well, and the Historic Kempsville Citizen Advisory Council can attest to just the impact that working together on a project like the one that is happening in Historic Kempsville can do to bring people together and to share culture and to connect communities and help us understand each other, our histories, and our different backgrounds and cultures, and contemplating what we would like our future to look like. And that's all happening in the Historic Kempsville project. Another great example is the one that happened at the side of the African American Cultural Center, Portraits from a Place of Grace, that pays tribute to Black leaders throughout Virginia Beach and historically Black neighborhoods of Virginia Beach through this public art installation. That not only beautifies the neighborhood and the road, but also helps teach us about our culture and our history. And so I think public art is a really big part of that, and I think you've addressed that. I think you've also addressed the support for major cultural organizations. And what we've learned is that emerging artists and smaller arts organizations have different needs than our major cultural organizations, such as Virginia Musical Theater, such as Virginia Mocha, such as the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia, such as the African American Cultural Center, pardon me, the Virginia African American Cultural Center. And so I think you've been very responsive to those different needs that exist and are delineated with those types of organizations. And then another thing that I think is really important is that you've also created an avenue to establish staff support to address the enhanced operations and enhanced responsibilities that come with this task that we've shared with you, that we've asked you to accomplish. And I think we need to be aware of that as we go into this, is that all of these programs that you just enumerated and explained require operational support and administrative support and staff support in order to achieve. So if we're asking you to do that, we should be prepared to support your team with the resources needed to achieve those goals. I do think, I welcome the conversation that will certainly occur here. But as an arts professional for more than a decade, I wholeheartedly endorse and support the plan that you've created. And I also, you know, hearing your presentation today really reminded me of the level of confidence that I had when we established this dedicated fund. You remember I said, "Part of the reason I feel so good about this and comfortable with this is because of the level of confidence I have in you and your team at Cultural Affairs." And I certainly feel that that has been validated today by what you've shared with us. And I do look forward to the feedback we receive from the community, but I think you delivered exactly what this council asked you to deliver. There's room for certainly some changes and some tweaks, but I do want to emphasize the last thing that you said, which is that the Arts and Humanities Commission is going to be meeting, and we really need to let them know as soon as possible what our plan is so that they can anticipate that in their plans to work with the community. So, well done, and thank you very much.
Okay, Barbara, Amelia, and then Chris.
Well, that sort of is a little bit of what I'm confused about, and that is the relationship between the Arts and Humanities Commission and this. Are they two separate tracks with separate funding? Or do they somehow come together? I'm not exactly understanding exactly what the Arts and Humanities Commission's role will be and what this role will be. And maybe you're still trying to determine that because it sounds like there's some uncertainty about funding. But are they two separate funding streams? And will we be, at budget time, looking to fund the Arts and Humanities Commission stream and this stream? Or how is it going to work? And if you don't have that answer today, I can't understand. But that's my confusion right now. I just don't understand what the role of these two intuitions.
So what's being proposed today is using some of the dedicated revenue stream to enhance and add to the Arts and Humanities Commission's budget. So that they have more resources to provide through their project grants. The new grants, being four of them, I think we need, the commissioners are all volunteers, so to review four new grant applications, I feel like is a really big ask. So we are looking at how other cities are reviewing their grants and then making recommendations to the Arts and Humanities Commission, but not having the Arts and Humanities Commission have to review five new grant or four new grant opportunities. Does that help you?
I suppose that will work as we go. But apparently, we are looking at two funding streams, the Arts and Humanities budget, and this is an additional amount of money.
Yes, Councilwoman Henley, and also Arts Humanities, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, they would get an additional plus-up as part of this funding stream as well.
So in the future, we won't be looking at increasing the basic amount to the Arts and Humanities Commission. They will be getting their additional funding from this stream.
In theory, if council wants to go down that path, they could do that. But council could, in this discussion, add funding to it, but that's a possibility.
Because I got really confused when you started talking about the larger organizations and so forth. Apparently, there's an awful lot that I don't know. So I'm looking forward to being educated.
Okay, Amelia, then Chris.
To add to what you mentioned, Councilwoman Henley, if you see on that one where it says increased funding, it says under there, additional funding to Arts and Humanities Commission. So that's part of this entire process. Because I know that would come up from community people. Are they going to be each year and ask? This is why we're looking at something that's dedicated, so it's ongoing, and that problem doesn't keep coming up. The second thing, I want to thank you for what your presentation was wonderful. I'm glad you mentioned about the additional staffing because there is a need. And with what all you're going to cover, we will need people coming and going into the communities and so forth. I also like that you mentioned about schools. Because we have some young people who may not have graduated, but there's a need, and they can show that creative side of them through having some of these grants. So to me, that is very important. I'm really happy that you've done that research because this way you validate what you're showing to us. And that is very important as we move forward. Last thing I wanted to mention, you also delineated the change between the festival, because we have the nine-day festival, and this is for the arts. So there should not be some kind of a crossover, a festival people coming to you to get some of this funding because you've actually spelled out how you're going to use it down to zero. So for those listening, this is, you know what I mean, right? This is for the arts. Thank you.
Hey, Chris. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you for the presentation and work you've put into this. I guess because you're looking for specific input on the plan, the first just observation is almost 50% of this is going to the increase to arts and cultural organizations. And it is important because this says for major art institutions. And just this past, this fiscal year, we've had several of them come that were already and already received COG grants. The manager has indicated that when those requests came, he communicated that it was outside of the process. So we have already gone outside of the process. And so one of my concerns here with this 896 is, for instance, the Sandler Center, we know we are subsidizing. We helped BMT this past year. Is, I thought one of the goals was to expand what we're doing. And historically, others have felt they didn't have access. For instance, when we helped out BMT, others didn't have the opportunity to come back for what we call in the country, seconds, second serving. And so I want to make sure the feedback is, "Great plan, but I think there could be some work around that." We talked, we've heard over and over about emerging artists. And I want to be clear, this is culture and art. So the festivals that I've been a part of and seen here typically have a underlying cultural aspect. And so to cut them out or to leave them out because it's not art, I don't know if I could definitely support that. Thirty, only 34% is going to individual artists and to neighborhoods and programming to districts. Councilman Schulman and I exchanged some emails earlier last month where he brought up the flags on Shore Drive and to identify neighborhoods. So you have two places, programming in districts, and then arts and neighborhoods. And again, nothing against D6 and D5, but we see, I think, the majority of our public art in D5 and D6. We have a little bit on D8 on the bridge, the Lesnar Bridge. So how does staff, this is a question, how does staff go about ensuring that communities that don't have any or very little are going to get a fair share? If you can speak to that.
Thank you, Councilmember. We take extreme care in mapping. If we take public art, for example, we've mapped all the public art amenities throughout the city and found this current fiscal year that Ms. Wooton's district was the only district that didn't have any type of public art. So that's when we moved forward with the City View Sculpture in the City View Park. So it is definitely on our mind. It's on the Public Art Committee's mind to make sure that we really spread the arts throughout programming and visual arts.
Correct. And then from the cultural piece, can you speak to leaving that out? Or is that included? And then, I guess, for the manager, if organizations continue to just come to council members or come to you, are we going to direct them now to this? Or will there, I'm sure there, I guess, still be opportunities to go outside of this new process? I think folks can always come to council, and council could decide how they want to handle that, you know? But once council adopts a process, for example, if you adopt recommendations that come from the Nine-Day Task Force, and that's what you all adopt, this policy, staff is going to direct its energies and its resources and whoever inquires to whatever process you adopt out of that. You know, and if there's a cultural element here that can support certain kind of festivals, you know, we would send it down this path as well. But it really depends on how council wants to bring it down. Like, for example, if it's an arts festival, maybe it makes sense. But, you know, there may be other ones that don't make sense in the future to be a part of this. But it really depends on what you all adopt. This far, if it's a policy, that gives us the guidelines and the boundaries which we play in.
And lastly, because there is a RASAP plan that the previous council adopted, and we've just, I think, appropriated money for a significant amount of placemaking in Pacific Atlantic. Do individual communities, civic leagues, have to come to council members if they would like additional placemaking? How do these communities actually express that they have an interest in pot number two?
Thank you. The, I think the perfect route would be the first set of grants. And it's, so there's two routes. Increase, it's this increasing public art and placemaking that is city-driven, and that's the third bullet. But we're also looking at, looking to the community and s- But we're also looking at, looking to the community and civic leagues to work together to apply for these arts and neighborhoods grants. So there's really two avenues. If they want to coalesce a team of artists, that is exactly what we would be looking for in the grants to neighborhoods.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Hutch, Josh, Jennifer.
Hey, so I just wanted to follow up on our conversation, and it dovetails right into what you were talking about there, Councilman Taylor, is the increased public art part, you know, and we've talked about how we do that. And I echo, you know, love y'all, but, you know, the fifth and sixth get a lot, you know? We'd like to, like to share some in Kempsville, you know, and finds, and like we had talked about, maybe thinking outside the box. And appreciated even being at the parks and everything else, but like I said to you, like turning it off a military onto Indian River, there's like 60,000 cars a day right there, and there's a lot that would be real nice to have something. It could even be Welcome to Virginia Beach, because it is on that side of the city where it's bringing all three cities together, you know? Or even a joint project between all three cities. It's literally within quarter of a mile of all three cities. So just something like that, you know, I think would be good. I think we would enjoy it. I like seeing it. I really like the Welcome to Virginia Beach on Shore Drive, you know, I think that's cool. So in the interstate, I mean, the interstate is really where I'm talking about. Yeah. But anyway, just thank you for talking to us about it. I appreciate it.
Okay, Josh and Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. LaBeau, congratulations. This is a lot of work, and I know you didn't have a whole lot of time to do it, but extremely impressive, very supportive of the way you've categorized these priorities and new opportunities. I particularly like the, this notion of bringing art in into the communities with these neighborhood grants and with placemaking and public art projects. You know, there are, there are so many places that we visit around the country where, when you arrive, you really feel like you're on vacation. And I think Virginia Beach could use a little bit more of that. And, and that is, that is a benefit, not, not just to the people visiting us, but it, but it's a tremendous benefit to those of us who live here on the daily basis and, you know, to take those measures through affairs like Hutch was talking about to work. And I love the idea of a joint project between the cities too at one of our, at one of our shared borders. And, you know, and, and I appreciate and understand your focus on trying to spread this around the city so that, so that everybody can enjoy it. And I'd be remiss, and I know you and I talked briefly, that if I did not mention a wonderful opportunity to touch multiple districts that traverses the entire cross-section of our city in that upcoming Virginia Beach Trail with tremendous public art and placemaking opportunities there and storytelling. So really well done. And, and I'd love to, I'd love to see and know that there are some creatives and artists who are, who are putting themselves into shaping what this process looks like too. Because I'd like to think I'm creative, but I don't think I am. So better to leave it in the hands of the people that, that can actually make, make stuff happen. So again, congratulations. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, then Michael.
Thank you, Ms. LaBeau. Thank you for this framework. And I echo my colleagues in wanting to see the public benefit in our neighborhoods and our communities and to spread it out more into areas that don't typically get the benefit of this kind of investment. Clarification, some, or is this something to be determined? Some of the placemaking or some of the art, it's a mix of temporary, a mix of permanent. So like the installations can and will change, or will they, will they be stuck? So what are, what are you thinking?
We envision a combination of both, some that are permanent and then some that are changing, which people come and see how they change throughout their neighborhoods. So yes, we, we will expect both. Thank you.
Michael.
Thank you.
And then work.
Two things. The first is that I am so glad to hear all of the sentiments shared around the table about the interest in distributing public art throughout our city. I've been an advocate for that for a long time, as long as I've been here. I think that every part of our city, District Three included, and especially it's deserving of the same level of beautification and engagement and investment in every way, including public art, that every other district receives. And I'm so pleased, as I mentioned, that we're, we are establishing public art in District Three and in Kempsville at the historic Kempsville area. And I think there's a lot of opportunities throughout the city, many of which were named over here around this table. So I think that's built in. I just want to emphasize, I really do believe that that's built in to this plan. There's the, I don't know, increased public art, placemaking and programming into districts that specifically enumerates that. And then I think leaves room for our professional cultural affairs staff to work with us and community members. And I think Councilman Taylor raised a great point about potentially creating a very transparent and accessible pipeline where neighborhoods and communities and civic leagues and folks can, can access that, that program. And with $350,000 annually, we'll be able to make those investments in the districts very rapidly, and we'll see that broad distribution throughout the city. So I just want to share, to put everyone who's interested in that at ease, to say, I have every level of confidence that that's, that's the intent of this plan. And, and that I know I, and I believe cultural affairs shares your, your interest in pursuing that goal. The other thing, I, I don't want to leave this conversation without a next step. And so what I would like to request, and Mr. Stiles, you let me know if you need this in writing or if this suffice, but I'd like for an ordinance to be drafted and that we can start this process based on the recommendations that you received here. Maybe we, we still have time to make adjustments if anyone has any other, any other ideas on, on, for how to, how to do it exactly. But I don't think that, I think this is an excellent plan. I think it's very well, very well researched and very carefully designed. And I feel very comfortable moving forward with this plan as, as described here. And if anyone has any suggestions, I think we have room to workshop that. But, but my request would be that we, that we go ahead and draft that ordinance, and I would welcome any co-sponsors.
Okay, Worth, and then Chris, and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Ms. LaBeau, for great, thoughtful work here. I really liked the spreading it out, the four pillars, from artists to placemaking course. And I agree, great conversation and discussion around the table to support what everyone has been saying. And I would second drafting an ordinance to put this in writing, that we vote on this. And then just to remind everyone in the public that the $1.6 million does come from the tip fund, meaning we're reducing the admissions tax by 20%, going to the tip fund and redirecting it to this cultural arts initiative and effort. So rightly so, 100% does not necessarily need to go to the tip fund. This helps, and it should be spread throughout the city.
Okay, Chris, and then Sabrina.
If we're looking to throw out an ordinance and move forward today, I, my suggestion from District Eight would, I would love to see a little less in 896. And if we really are trying to promote emerging artists, individuals that haven't had access a little bit more on the front end to grants to individual artists and bring arts to neighborhood grants, since, as Councilmember Luci said, this is going to be ongoing, I think we have a great deal of public art, great deal of placemaking that we just invested in on Atlantic Pacific, very little on Shore Drive, and then programming you all are working on. So I just think a little heavy on number two, if I could support an ordinance, I just think number one would benefit more people, more individuals in our community if that number was higher, especially since we don't know if it's going to be $200 a person, $2,000. We haven't seen any of those metrics.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that qualifies, and I mean, obviously, you know, if council wants to add 50,000, 25,000 to our first bullet, that's councils, let us know if they want us to go down that path. But one thing to important to note is that this funding source, knock on wood, right, would grow each year, right? And it has grown each year as well. So what's here right now is not poured in concrete, right? As additional funding comes available, council could, it could be reallocated to some of these programs, or council may want to expand out to do other programs at a future date. You know, I think that's one of the reasons why I think the city council members wanted to move in this direction by creating this dedicated funding sources, that each year you should be seeing more than what you see here, right? Because our admissions tax grows annually, and this is going to be a portion dedicated from that as well. So there is that ability to plus up some of these programs next year or expand out to other opportunities should they avail themselves to you.
Okay, Sabrina.
I really appreciate Ms. LaBeau's, how thoughtful this is. You and your staff have worked through all of the requirements from the legislation to put this together. I appreciate your communication and working with everyone to do so. Just a few observations that I have. So, you know, even in terms of, and this would not be to prolong any next steps or ordinances to move this forward, but just to consider, I'd say, one, how we communicate this information to the community? So now we have new programs. How do we communicate to those who wish to participate, to be a part of that? And I'm sure that will certainly be an ongoing part of the process. And I think to have a robust program, marketing strategy also to get, and educational awareness to get these programs out to the community so that they know. Because we know that even when we do it, you always find someone who doesn't know. Hence, folks reaching out to city council members. So whether we want that or not, folks are going to still reach out to us as representatives to find out how they can showcase their artistic abilities. And that's okay, because that's what we do. We are representatives who answer questions and point people to resources. That's important. So we're, we're always going to have that in terms of making sure folks connect with the right resources. The other observation would be, I know, in working with small businesses and local businesses, when grants come available, the funding sometimes is used up, sometimes it's almost immediately, because folks can find out and they can certainly use up those funding sources pretty quickly. So again, you still may have folks reaching out to say, how do I approach city council or staff to do an event because we're out of funding? That's going to happen, and it happens often, especially when grants are provided. The other observation would be in terms of criteria and stipulations. One of the areas I see here for your local option talks about having to live, or, okay, here it is, supporting or support for local artists. Artist must be current resident, has maintained primary residence for a certain number of years. Again, I know with grant funding with local businesses, sometimes there are exceptions. And so perhaps if there are exceptions, which there may be, because let's be honest, there's exceptions to every rule. I've seen it here many times, there are exceptions. So we do have to be cognizant that we may have a situation or we may see someone who may fit an exception to the rule and having ways to kind of mitigate those circumstances. It's going to be important, especially when we're looking at making sure we have participation from, from everyone who really wishes to, you know, showcase their talents, become an emerging artist who, from their local community, who wants to be a part of this whole process. So I would just certainly urge the body to keep an open mind and understand that this is not a size, one size fits all, because there's always someone who's going to fall outside of that criteria and may need extra guidance. And also with that said, a lot of the new changes here in the new programs, I mean, I could even foresee perhaps a little, I don't know, a boot camp or workshop for people to come to and understand the process, how it works, how they fill out paperwork, what criteria you're looking for, what are the requirements, what does that look like? So I think a lot of that is going to be important to the success of these programs. But I certainly do applaud you and the council as well for finding ways to showcase our local and emerging artists and anything that's going to do that, anything that's going to enlarge or create more opportunities for that, I certainly will support, and I certainly will continue to look for ways to do that even as this process moves on. Thank you.
Okay, Michael.
My last comment. I think that Councilman Wooton brought up some really great points. I especially like your idea about the boot camp workshop. And I also think that your point was well made about how do we share this information? And I look forward to, to seeing how that rolls out and to learning more. Let's, you know, it should be a big splash, because this is a transformational investment and historic investment that we were able to do without raising real estate taxes and creating additional burden on taxpayers. And it's going to have unbelievable impact on the arts and culture community and on every aspect of our community in Virginia Beach. And, and everyone should have an equal access and ready access to participate in it. So I think those comments were very well made. If I could just take a moment to respond to Mr. Taylor's suggestion about the, the distribution, I do want to say that I appreciate the intent of his suggestion and, and I share it, although I do know that the individual artist grants are meant to be reasonably small because, for two reasons, I think. One is that, you know, we're not, these grants aren't meant to fund the art experience of any, any particular artist. It's meant to assist the artist in their development. And I think their intent, and to, to assist them with the supplies and the things that they may need to participate in a bigger project. And I could think of an example that I'm, I'm afraid from giving right at this moment. But as a working artist, there are many people who are, I'm not a working artist, but many working artists have opportunities that they don't have the funding to support, that their work would benefit the community and in many ways, our partnerships with the community. But they're not meant to be fully funding their work. And so I think this is a more than generous appropriation for this intent. And as the manager pointed out, we'll have an opportunity as this moves forward to respond to those needs. But I actually think that there's going to be more money in that pot, if you want to call it that, than we'll see a need for in the first year. But on the larger cultural organizations, of which there are few in Virginia Beach, that funding, as we've learned from, from all of those organizations, is critical to the operations. They have different, as we mentioned before, different needs. So I'm comfortable with the, not to dismiss anyone's suggestion, but for me personally, I'm comfortable with the appropriation as described, knowing that if we see a need that emerges, that we'll be able to respond to that. But I think you've anticipated that need in the program that you designed, from, from my point of view.
Hey, Hutch.
I just want to echo what Councilmember Luci was saying is, I appreciate, and again, it's the first time having this happen for me, is that as a director or as the fire chief, I don't know that I'd want to be asking 11 people to help me make the budget. So if you, if Councilman Taylor has a good suggestion, I'm all for it. But I would take it that you've run this through a couple of filters to make sure this is where you wanted this money to land. So that's why, that's why I would just support what you had with reference that if it's a good point, it's a good point. Thanks.
Okay, Amelia.
I noticed you have some things that are very important. You mentioned about the Arts and Humanities that do need the extra funding sooner than later to complete what they had, because this is how this came about in the first place, that they had more people who they would like to award and were short. So maybe that's one area we can look at earlier. Also, you've mentioned having a panel, committees, having staff, those are the people that you really need to get this standing up. So we should really kind of look at the whole process, because a lot of times when you mention the word arts, it has three legs. There's the literary arts, there's the aesthetic, and there's the... There's the literary arts, there's the aesthetic, and there's the performing arts. And they all come under arts, which is part of culture. So one cannot go without the others. You know that song, Love and Marriage, all of that? But it's, it's that same process. So I'm in with our council members looking at preparing an ordinance sooner than later so we can address these areas that are needed before we get everything going. Thank you again. This is, this is really nice.
Okay. Thank you very much, Emily.
Thank you.
You know, in talking to other mayors from around the country, you know, they also, you know, emphasize, you know, culture and arts as part of the DNA of their cities. And not only is it good in terms of quality of life, you know, for the folks that live there, but it's also when we go to attract other companies to come here, create those new revenue sources, and they take a look at the amenities that every city has. And, you know, and the cities that are very successful, if you look, also have very vibrant, you know, culture and arts going on too. But once again, I really think the conversation was good and focused, and we should get to yes as soon as possible. Okay? Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time Kathy Warren, our Director of Planning and Community Development, will come and give council an overview of a project that council initially provided direction for us to start working with the developer on the Pembroke Square redevelopment project. Kathy's going to give an overview of the history and the timeline, the redevelopment plan, as well as the estimated fiscal impact. We're also going to ask councils for consideration of bringing forward legislation for you all to approve the term sheet in, in early July.
Hey, welcome Kathy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Let me just check to see if this is working. Yes, okay, great. So as the manager stated, I'm here today to talk to you about the Pembroke Square redevelopment project in the Pembroke SGA. Here are your disclosures.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay, so for the presentation today, we'll be giving you a history of Pembroke Mall, a timeline for the Pembroke Square redevelopment plan, the proposed redevelopment plan and what it includes, a 2022-2024 project cost comparison, as well as a fiscal impact analysis and the proposed next steps. So for the history of the mall, in March of 1965, construction began on Pembroke Mall. In 1966, 21 of the mall's first doors opened, and in 1981, Pembroke Mall underwent its first expansion. By the mid 1990s, Pembroke Mall unfortunately started to lose tenants primarily because of new malls coming online, like the Lynn Haven Mall and MacArthur Center in Norfolk. In 2003, the mall's management began strategizing for a redevelopment plan of the property. In 2015, Sears Holdings spun off 235 of its properties, including the Sears of Pembroke Mall, into saratage growth properties. Then in 2018, it announced that Sears would be closing. In 2020, Stein Mart then closed. So by December of 2021, the mall announced that the 48 remaining tenants must vacate by the end of January 2022 as part of their $200 million-plus redevelopment plan. So in July of 2022, Pembroke Mall was rebranded to Pembroke Square, a mixed-use project to include residential, retail, restaurants, and hotel new development. The timeline for the redevelopment plan, in February 2022, the developer requested city council to consider cost participating for public parking as part of the Pembroke Mall redevelopment plan. In April of '22, city council approved a resolution to approve the term sheet for the redevelopment of Pembroke Mall. Then in December of 2022, Aviva, the Phase 1 of their redevelopment plan, this is a senior housing community, that broke ground. From April of 2022 to December of 2023, the developer revised its development plan based on current construction costs and further development plans for the entire project. In fall of 2023, demolition of the central area of the mall, this included the Stein Mart building, as well as an out parcel, which was the former SunTrust building, they were demolished. And then in March of 2024, city council had a closed session briefing on the revised term sheet and numbers. So today, June, July of 2024, we're making this public briefing to city council to consider cost participation for a not-to-exceed amount of $22.35 million for two public parking So on the left is a picture of the mall as it previously was a few years ago, and then on the right, you see the three yellow boxes are what we're really talking about today. The box up at the top of the screen is Aviva, their senior development. The yellow box in the middle is the multifamily and garage portion of the development, and then down by Virginia Beach Boulevard, that yellow box is a new hotel and parking garage. The two red squares that you see are anticipated for future office development. So again, the three phases of development, the Phase 1, senior living, Phase 2, multifamily development with a parking deck, and then Phase 3, hotel development with a parking Going into the detail of each phase, this is Phase 1, Aviva, senior living, 153 units, $64.3 million anticipated total development cost. They started this phase in December of 2022, and it will be complete in October of 2024. Here's the latest picture as of last week. Onto Phase 2, a multifamily community, 272 units, 611 space parking garage. These are public parking spaces, a $69 million total development cost. The start is anticipated to be the fourth quarter of 2025 with an end date of the fourth quarter in 2027. For Phase 3, this is a new hotel, 156 rooms, 134 space public parking garage, anticipated $30 million total development cost. Start is anticipated to be the first quarter of 2025 with a completion in the fourth quarter of 2026. So as I stated earlier in the slide, in one of the slides, Pembroke Realty first came in with their proposal in February of 2022. That's the second column there, and that shows the number of units for the senior development, multifamily, and hotel. And a total amount of public parking space is at 791. The anticipated total development cost there was $162.4 million with a cost participation of $23.8 million for the public parking garages. Onto the third column or fourth column there for new proposal as of March of 2024, you'll see that the units have been reduced for all three of the phases, and the parking spaces have been reduced as well to 745. The anticipated total development cost, however, has increased slightly, but the cost participation has reduced to $22.35 million, which is what you're considering today. So for the assumptions associated with the fiscal impact here, again, two parking garages at 745 parking spaces, those are public parking spaces. The cost per parking spaces, per space is $30,000 per space with an anticipated $2,750 per space carrying cost. What that is, is if we decide, as opposed to doing a pay-go situation here where we paid on a monthly basis for the construction, we wouldn't have a carrying cost. But we have found in recent projects, there's a day, a daily workload that's on not only the private sector, but the public sector as well. So we'd like to potentially negotiate a deal here where we have the garage turned over at the completion of construction, and we pay for it at that time. Carrying costs are associated with that during the construction, so that's what that figure is there. But again, it's a not-to-exceed $22.35 million for the developer to construct this garage. So for revenue from the project, that's anticipated to begin in 2026. Fiscal impact includes all projected real estate general fund revenue to occur from the development. To ensure that those revenues remain within the general fund, dedication of the real estate revenue equivalent to the revenue generated would need to occur within the general fund. There will also be an establishment of a special service district or an SSD. This is just like Town Center with a 40, an additional 45 cents added to the tax rate to support debt service for design and developer construction gap at $5,000 per space or 5.5 million. And garage maintenance would also be taken care of by that SSD as well, as far as any enhanced services within that boundary of the SSD. Again, it's very similar to the Town Center SSD and how that operates. So for the estimated fiscal impact to the general fund, over a 20-year period, the cumulative revenue is anticipated to be $48.5 million. The 20-year cumulative expenses are estimated to be at about $33 million with an estimated net revenue after 20 years of $15.3 million. Net present value of revenue is estimated to be at $7.5 million. So for consideration today and discussion, there's the cost participation for 30,000 a space. This is a not-to-exceed amount of $22.35 million with the possibility of the $2,750 per space carrying costs. So the developer would also request the SSD to be formed at some point in the near future that would cover that 1.5 million design cost and the $4 million in construction cost And then next steps, again, city council today discussing and considering cost participating in the project, and if the city council is amenable, an ordinance can be added to the July 2nd, 2024 city council agenda for consideration. And I'll take any questions.
We're going to start with Chris, and then Worth and Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And my apologies, I was absent in March due to sickness, so I missed that closed session briefing. So this is the first time I'm seeing this, so I had to stay up late and read on this to provide some questions for the district constituents. So the first, we, we're a small business owners, the first store we have is in Primert Mall, so very familiar with parking. We were actually the first food kiosk in Primert Mall's history. And so when you look at this transition from mall to mixed use, the only surface area they're losing in parking is at that, I guess, northeast corner, the senior, because the hotel was a, the SunTrust building is going to be the new hotel, doesn't seem to be taken. So first question, just for the public, is do you know how many parking spaces are currently available to the public on this property?
They have approximately 3,000.
Okay. And being the historical nature of Primert Mall and their developers, has the city, did the city cost participate in any construction of any of these new out parcels?
For Pembroke Mall?
Yes.
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Right. And then we have senior housing, retail, which is going to be primarily existing.
You will have additional retail with the multifamily on the ground floor and hotel.
Okay. And then the residential apartments, and it's probably a silly question, but any affordable units?
No, sir.
And then the hotel parking, same thing, not, were we on a ballroom in there? Is this?
No, sir.
By the developer. For the value proposition that I guess the developer brought, what is currently wrong with the existing public parking with 3,000 spaces and not much surface area being taken up after the construction?
They are looking to revitalize and redevelop the Pembroke Mall area. So if you can start developing structured parking, just like Town Center, and start building up, that's going to open additional land possibilities for redevelopment down the road.
On the site?
Correct.
And with those, have they intimated, if those would be public-private or primarily, because we don't, there's no revenue coming to us in terms of the partnership outside of?
Right, we have not discussed that at this point.
582 spaces, 329 apartments, market rate, anticipated investment roughly $19 million, $30,000 per space, but the parking garages will be free?
Correct.
Because at the roundtable, we've continuously discussed the need to add to our tax base, and many have identified that parking, there is an opportunity there. So free for 30 years? 20?
20.
How are we, how much are we charging the developer for the use of the spaces we're going to, I guess, lease back?
So if they were going, if any of the residents there wanted to lease a space, a reserved space for a bimonthly, not bimonthly, by the month, sorry, they could pay something like $100, just like Town Center. They get a sign where their spot is reserved and only they can park there, but they would pay that on a monthly basis to us.
To us.
Correct.
Is that the current situation at Town Center?
Yes, sir.
Because a lot of residents, when we had the discussion about the SSD, the shortfall last year, and their increased rate, there's not a lot of residents in Town Center that are happy. They don't feel there is an increase, or they have any special privileges outside of maybe seeing the fountain. So I just wanted to make sure, because no one's going to own these, these apartments on this property. Is that right? It's just all for rent?
Correct.
And then have we, has staff looked at, so we have current struggles with the SSD in Town Center, we have, I think it's roughly $4 million potential deficit. Have we looked at how to mitigate that same situation from taking place across the street?
We have not gotten into that level of detail.
I think that's my last question. Thank you.
Here, Worth, and then Barbara.
Thanks, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Ms. Warren, for the presentation. Couple of questions and then an observation and a request, not to nitpick, but on page five, you say the total development cost is $200 million, and then on page eight, you say it's 240. Maybe a corollary question, is the hotel paying for its hotel, or is that the developer? Hotel, is the developer leasing the land to the hotel? But back to the question, is it 200 or 240 million? That's.
So I believe that the 240 was associated with future office development.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I would have to get you the information on the land lease portion.
If, if the hotel's going to build it or the developer?
Correct.
I guess it's the hotel.
I will get you that information.
So just an important point, I think the public is going to want to know, I'm going to want to know, and you emphasized it, I think twice, just to be sure, the request is for $22.35 million for public investment in the parking garage, and that's capped.
Correct.
Almost to $30 million, we don't make up any difference.
That's correct, 30,000 per space.
And then a distinction here that I think is important as well, this will be Town Center, if you will, or Pembroke Square North, it's not a part of the SSD of Town Center South.
That's correct.
Does not impact.
Completely separate.
The borrowing capability of that, of the cell, of the existing Town Center.
Correct.
So just a final comment, I believe this, I think it's like a 54-acre site, incredible site in the center part of our city. It's evolved, it's served our city very well over time, but we're seeing a change of course in retail, and I support the developer changing this out. It costs money. And to, and one of our things is, is housing. So let me go ahead and jump to what I'm going to say, affordable housing is not a part of this, but if you brought the map back up of the mall, I believe there's other areas in this, at the mall, Pembroke Square now. in this, at the mall, Pembroke Square now, that potential affordable housing can be placed. And I would not say necessarily that we pass this or, you know, support this, subject to that, but I would highly recommend that we ask the developer to carve out, and I realize that they don't own the southwest quadrant, so that's another developer, by the way, I think that needs to be pointed out, where she, actually, they bought the Sears site.
And that's out of retail.
Commercial. So I would just say that this is a great site for future affordable housing, especially if it's for sale versus for lease. I'd like to maybe make some kind of request that they consider that, because there's plenty of land there for, and that's why we're, they're not going to necessarily surface park around the mall, it's going to be structured parking to support the apartment building. That saves on land in a very crucial area of our city.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara and Josh.
Well, I suppose that's kind of what, what's missing here is not really realizing what other property is still available and for what development here. Because when we're building public parking garages, I'm wondering what's the public opportunity here? I suppose they're going to be, it's going to be free parking.
Yes.
Unless someone who lives there chooses to lease.
Correct.
And you've got to compete with that, but for the public. But I'm, I'm kind of trying to look to see what the public usage is going to be here as it is now, but I suppose it's the future that we're looking at that would have, but I think you did mention retail, I don't really see retail here.
There's retail on the ground floor of the multifamily, and it's anticipated for the hotel as well.
Well, I think probably knowing how much of the, this area is left for future development is something we might need to know.
We can provide that.
If we're going to be investing in public parking, we've got to make certain it's going to be parking that the public is going to need.
Okay, Chris and then Worth.
We don't have a lot of malls in Virginia Beach, but have we cost participated, like in Lynn Haven Mall parking deck, did we cost, participated in that?
I believe it. The first.
Good question. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the city, the city had a TIF for the parking deck, the ring roads and the BMPs at Lynn Haven Mall that has since been retired.
Retired?
Yes.
And when you say retired, because we, was there, I think we discussed, there was a TIF in Town Center that we did not retire.
TIF in Town Center is still present, yes.
But we've retired the one at the mall, so those funds now go to the general fund?
Correct. And then we also retired one at Sandbridge.
So there is a distinction between Lynn Haven Mall and, say, Town Center in terms of the TIF and the money used to construct that.
So the TIF.
The Town Center supports the debt on the parking garages, and so that debt remains outstanding. And so as long as that debt is there, the TIF supports the debt related to parking versus the SSD, which supports the ongoing maintenance, the programming and like the ambassadors.
Do you have an idea when that TIF will be retired or those, that debt on just the garages, because we're coming up on 24 years?
So it'll depend on the future actions of the city council. So for instance, the, the tower that opened, I believe, five years ago, phase five, so that one would still have, I think, 16 years left on its debt. So as, as the council makes further actions, then it'll extend the duration of that TIF to support the debt.
Thank you.
Okay, Worth and then Josh.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. So just to address what Mrs. Henley asked, and it's a very legitimate question, what public uses, what value to the public is this parking garage? And so, and that's the question I have, and Councilman Schulman rightly pointed out that across the street at Town Center, the market is set in Town Center for parking. We cannot charge for parking in Town Center, it just does not work. And that's a bold statement, and that's, but that is the market. And so there is public benefit to this parking garage, but if we chart, if the developer or the city charged for the parking deck across the street, it's free parking.
Okay, good. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Warren, for the presentation and for explaining these details. Just having, you know, working in and around Town Center for many years, you know, parking is what, free parking is what made Town Center and that mixed-use development possible. Without, without free parking, there, there wouldn't, there wouldn't have been any traffic for the, for the retail. And equally so, by the way, with the residential. I mean, in order to make mixed-use work, you got to have, you got to have people. And, and you've got to have people going to, going to work in the office buildings, you got to have people going to the retail and supporting that. And I mean, perhaps missed in some of this is, is, yeah, I mean, there's public investment in terms of the garage, but these fiscal impact figures are just real estate taxes is what we're talking about. So not, not, not in these figures is, is the hotel taxes and the, and all of those other things that generate tax revenue to us. And the way, the way that it looks to me is we have a, we have a historic, historic property, historic developer who has, you know, been, been at this, at this key corner in the middle part of our city for forever, and they're looking to do exactly what our strategic planning documents are asking them to do and, and create, create a vibrant city center, you know, better, better, hopefully better connect these four quadrants, or certainly two of them at least for right now in our city. You know, create that mixed use, create opportunities for additional development around it and connected to it. And I mean, this is a, this is an incredibly important strategic corridor in our city, and we ought to be, and we should be encouraging this, this kind of a thing, because it is exactly in line with, with every, everything that, that we've been working towards for, for this area. So I'm supportive of it, and I'm happy to request that an ordinance be added to the July 2 agenda for consideration.
Okay, Chris and then Amelia.
I'm just, I'm trying to. And I think the question's been asked, but I would just love a little bit more back on really the outside of it being near, next to Town Center. The last two developers that have come to us for private developments that we don't have a public-private partnership agreement with have had a shortfall. So we, it's either, see, there's some inflationary increases and then some prices went down. And so, again, I don't, I'm trying to wrap my head around the public benefit outside of it being next to Town Center. We have Why Not Wednesdays, we had a huge New Year's Eve fest, plenty of parking, some people walk across the street from, two of the restaurants that are now closed on the outside, so those aren't being used, and they'll walk across. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, how do I articulate to constituents that are on the hook for this 22 million, that if we don't put in the money, the deal doesn't go anywhere, they're already building the phase one? How do we justify not allowing that money back to the general fund? Whereas if we put this money forward, the revenues are going to go towards paying the debt for the parking garage that will be free and won't produce any revenue for the city, even though it may be a good economic development tool to lure development, even though this development's already under construction?
I just think one of the key facts about this is how important this quadrant is for the Pembroke SGA, for the Independence, for the Virginia Beach Boulevard intersection. And redeveloping this site with newer uses, new product, with structured parking helps tremendously as opposed to potentially a mall sitting there vacant and tenants leaving, and then you have a potentially blighting situation down the road. So we're incentivizing redevelopment in an area, and they are adhering to all of the things that the plan calls for. And it's providing public parking. If you start to go up with parking in certain areas, you open up development potential on some of that surface parking. The affordable housing is an excellent suggestion to make to the developer for future development.
And in your opinion, because you are the staff professional, we say how critical this location is, although, and it's coming out of close, we have a site similar that we've identified is not good for affordable housing, so I'm kind of, that's like two miles away, I'm trying to wrap my head around that. But in your professional opinion, we look at an opportunity that we did have at the oceanfront, that is another critical area around the sports center, which is having significantly, I think, more parking issues, and this body has, outside of asking for a master plan, was unable to agree that that immediate need, which we're seeing every weekend, that we couldn't necessarily cost participate in parking, because we needed a master plan. So in your professional opinion, between this location, which is not going to go out of business, they actually kicked everybody out, we got out before, and you have two outside parcels, one that's gone from retail to not retail, it's actually commercial now, that is renting next to the Fresh Market. I'm just, I want to understand from a staff standpoint, if we're prioritizing dollars, taxpayer dollars, to go to alleviating the parking concerns, is this site more important than the convention center corridor?
I can't answer that. What I can answer is, working in Town Center, trying to get Town Center to expand west, to expand east, and improve the product there, this definitely checks those boxes.
Ms. Taylor, I would offer, they're all incredibly important, they're all important corridors to the city, you know, and I think as you, if you articulated, and as this council has heard as well, there's a tremendous need for parking on that area as well, but obviously we go wherever council sends us, so the path right now is to do a master plan. So once we go through that process, we'll come back to council and look for guidance as it relates to how council wants it to develop according to what it adopts.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Amelia and then Worth, Mayor.
Well, just what I wanted to say, and I just said, got a chance to go over, ask many questions about this. And this whole transition from mall to mixed use is important for that. And I would like, and I agree with Councilman Remick about the suggestion for some affordable housing, because whether you like it or not, you still need people that can service all of that area. And you've got seniors, you've got the retail, you've got the apartments, and that helps alleviate the transportation, getting from one place to the other. If you have some mixed use along there, I think that's important, not mixed use, but the affordable housing with the additional land that they have to consider it. Otherwise, I'm okay with the parking and so forth. Because it is, I have the other side of the Town Center that, and this is almost replicating it in some way. Thank you.
Hey, Rose, Mayor.
It's always been the vision of the Town Center to expand, not to just stay in that one little area and be stagnant. So this is an opportunity, and we've got some really good partners who, they know how, they know their business, they know how to deliver, they, they've got a good plan. And senior housing is going to be very important. There is a real shortage of senior housing. And I think it's exciting that they've done their marketing and they need another hotel there. There's several hotels that have been built, and they keep filling up, so we're getting hotels throughout the city, which are going to bring in more. We want to get to Cleveland Street. This is just sort of all part of it, you have to build, and you, this is the next phase, because we've got developers who are ready to do it. And we've all suffered from the inflation, I mean, we see it with our projects. So, I mean, we passed this, we voted on this before. The numbers had to change because of the reality of the market and costs of everything. But we're still going to be ahead, and we're still going to meet the goals of what we wanted to do with expanding the Town Center. And it's, it's a very similar plan with the, with the TIF district and the SSD, it's not combined, it's an add-on. So I, I think it's a good thing.
Hey, Chuck.
Just real quick, so what we're bringing up, especially Councilman Remick, is looking at this, is the northwest corner of the property, right behind the two red blocks, is that all part of the same development? Because I know you were saying there might be two.
Yes.
So, in, in essence, I was like, just looking at this from a, you know, novice standpoint, is that, yeah, redevelop, I mean, affordable housing, workforce housing, like, to me, would be wonderful to do some, you know, it's not in the, right in the front, you know what I'm saying? I was like, just thinking if that could be possible, I'm all in support of that.
And we can carry that message.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it this way, this is the wave of the future for us in a lot of ways, repurposing and fill, you know, some underperforming areas. And, you know, I agree with a conversation, a couple of conversations I had with Worth, Worth Remick about, you know, over the future, you know, shifting the ratio from commercial to, you know, versus residential to get more commercial out there. And I think, you know, once again, this would also help facilitate, you know, further growth, when you consider we're looking at, you know, you know, changing the, upgrading the independence interchange there, and the potential for development across by the Best Buy, but also the potential redevelopment, you know, of the, you know, Cleveland Street corridor. You know, this could be really a good game changer for that whole area. Okay, but, you know, just wondered, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good conversation, folks. Okay, any discussions, initiatives or comments, Rose, Mayor?
So a while back, Mayor and I brought up wanting to do a resolution to support, in support of Oceana. And this is to go to our federal partners, that we would like to be considered for any future aircraft for Oceana, because Oceana is a really big part of our city. And for us, for it to be, to survive and to go on, we can't, we can't just rest on our laurels and stay where we are. We really are going to be needing any future aircraft to be considered so that Oceana continues to thrive. So I was going to pass this out, and if anybody else would like, I'm not exactly sure when, we may get it on the second, we're trying to talk to, talk to people in Congress, in the Senate, and Navy personnel, like Admiral Cottle.
Admiral Cottle, of course, sir.
To be included in all of this. So, so we think it's going to be July 2, depending on all the players, if we can, if anybody would like to sign on, please let us know, or let Mark know.
Okay, you know, I definitely would sign on. If I could just say, you know, when I first got on council back in 2004, 2005, we got put on the blacklist. And I'll tell you what, that was a scare. And, you know, they did all kinds of economic impact studies of what Oceana made, you know, to us. And, you know, once again, as technology evolves and aircraft demands are up there, and I can tell you that there's a big also demand for increased shipbuilding in the region and everything, you know, this is all part of a national defense strategy that I think is really critical to our nation's safety. Chris, you have your hand up.
Yes. Last week, in a conversation with the vice mayor, we were discussing this most recent House Bill 456 that passed that gave municipalities the ability to address the council and mayor's compensation. And the mayor, the vice mayor, after we discussed, encouraged me to bring it up, being that I've resigned my seat, I will not benefit from that raise unless successful in November. And so I had asked the manager to have Brent provide the public some background on that bill, because staff or the vice mayor thought that the window had passed, but if there is no opposition, the deadline, we would have to have a presentation, I believe, or Mr. Mayor to you, I'll let you speak to the specifics, but if there's no opposition, I wanted Brent to speak to that, because in speaking to many members of the public throughout District Eight and across the city, one of their main concerns as it relates to the city of Virginia Beach and the salary for this part-time, full-time commitment is the ability to attract and retain talented individuals that will want to run for office without the barrier of the minimum salary that is there now. And so. And so if there's no opposition, Mayor, I'd like Brent to at least brief the public, and then if there's no opposition, provide the manager with direction.
Okay, does anybody mind that? You know, but, you know, I'm just, you know, saying, you know, I appreciate you bringing it up. And, you know, I think it's important, and I agree with some of the things that you said. But, you know, I think, you know, when I look back in 1968, when I went to Paris Island, we were making $92 a month, and we knew what the pay was going to be. And, you know, granted that we have to do a work-life balance, you know, what we have here. But, you know, I just think, and, you know, with due respect in terms of timing and budget constraints we're looking at, and what, you know, some of the challenges that we have, you know, with our public, you know, I'm just, you know, kind of reluctant at this time. But, you know, I do appreciate you bringing it up, but.
Is that a?
But at least let's, if you want to have a conversation and stuff.
And even maybe a poll, because I don't know if that's, if it's at the discretion of the council or the mayor, I know you may be uncomfortable. But if there's no opposition amongst the body, then we need to provide direction, if we're either going to put it up for a vote or not.
Well, maybe we should get, you know, the information and background first, and then...
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you okay with Brent just giving a quick synopsis of the bill?
Yes.
All right, Brent and Dana are able to speak to it in a quick, short order for council to have further conversation, should it want to.
Good afternoon, members of council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity here. As you may remember from some of the presentations during the General Assembly session, legislation was introduced, and it did wind up passing. That would allow city councils across the Commonwealth to increase their salaries. And so it's based on population, and so Virginia Beach's population being over 260,000, they increased the cap from 30,000 to 56,000 for mayor, and from 28,000 to 52,000 for a member of council. It also included a clause that would provide the ability to adjust that cap annually by inflation not to exceed 5%. They did, however, include a few clauses that makes it a little complex in accomplishing that. And so one of the pieces of the puzzle here is that you must hold a public hearing prior to that. The ordinance must be adopted four months prior to the next municipal election. So that would mean you would need to pass an ordinance by July 5th of this year. And then any increase that would take effect, wouldn't take effect until July 1st after municipal election. So furthering the complication here, I guess, is that if you didn't take this up this year, a council increase wouldn't take effect until after the 2026 general election, so that would be July 1st of 2027. So certainly lots of moving pieces, and Dana can speak a little bit too. I think some of the flow, that public hearing piece of it, is challenging and trying to get it done before that July, you'd have to do this at that July 2nd meeting. So I'll kind of turn it over to Dana for that piece of it.
Just briefly, the public notice ad has to run for two weeks, and so there is a limited window where it could run the subsequent Sundays or the subsequent Mondays to meet that requirement. And then the hearing would be on July 2nd, which is also the last voting meeting before that four-month window. So you would be hearing from the public the same night you're voting. I know councils traditionally doesn't like to do that, but they can do that in this discretion.
You could call a special meeting in the three days between the 2nd and the 5th. You just have to, you just have to do it before the 5th in order for it to be effective next June. And if not, then it's two years later.
Okay, open for discussion. Okay, Josh.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And please, I say this with all due respect, I have a problem with how this came, came before us just now, because I think it, it is, it is something that I would absolutely love a chance to talk about after having reviewed, you know, materials and prepared for an agenda, in a council briefing. But I just, and again, I mean, yeah, totally, totally acceptable topic for conversation, but I just, I know, you know, we typically, or we agreed as a body to have three, three members to get something on, an agenda for a presentation, or if it was at the direction of the manager, the mayor. So I just, and again, totally, totally okay topic to talk about, and I would have supported adding it on the agenda as well, so. But I just, I hope we don't use council comments as a way to put forward a staff presentation again.
Okay, Jennifer.
Yeah, I am, I hope if we do table this conversation today, that we do revisit it and have some sort of, like, plan for that. I don't think that we need to make any kind of decision this quickly, because with this election coming up, it's just not enough time for the public. But removing myself out of it, I was saying it, I've been saying it all along the way when I was campaigning for office. And if you look around the table, we have, I think, the youngest council, is it in our city's history? I don't know, maybe in a while. And I say that to say that there are, you know, intrinsic motivations for running for office, which is you want to do good and you want to help, but you have to pay bills. And what ends up happening is young people aren't running for office because they can't afford it, or you get bought out, because if you're not paying your bills, someone else is, and it puts you in a compromising position. And so I think if we want to truly attract people who want to run because they want to serve, but also they want to take care of their family, raising children, paying a mortgage, paying rent, I know a number of us are doing this and working full-time and have kids and are doing all these things. And so it's public service, but we are human beings, and we have limited capacity. And I think it's a disservice to the public when we're stretched so thin that there's very little left to give, if we're giving this many hours to our full-time job, this many hours to our families, that maybe at some point we sleep and can go to the gym and take care of ourselves, and that's just unsustainable. And it's just not good public service, because we can't do the work if we don't have the time to do it. So I do think there's merit in it. I think the public, absolutely, we need a lot of time to talk it over, so maybe not now, but I think at some point, it'd be fair to consider what kind of, the impact of compensation on recruiting candidates. So not, again, not for my own benefit, I don't need to do it now to see a pay raise while I'm on council, but I think it could be a really great thing to attract younger folks who could devote their full attention to this and still take care of their families.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilman Schuman through you. The vice mayor instructed me, you can bring it up on our council comments. Can't put it on the next week, because the council has discussed it. And after we got clarity from the attorney, because it was brought up in their agenda meeting, Councilman Schuman, I received another message that said, and feel free to bring it up Tuesday. So I just wanted to make, again, I don't benefit from it. So we, we've had the discussion, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Yeah. Sabrina.
So it might be helpful in having such a conversation to see what other localities of our size their council persons make, because that would be certainly pertinent to considering such a.
Okay, thank you. You know, but, you know, just a, you know, a sidebar thought here, when you think about the members of our delegation, you know, both in the House of Delegates and South Senate, they make far less work, less than we do. And, you know, they're going to spend a couple of months, you know, and Jennifer knows.
They should be paid more, too.
You know, all our spouses are.
You know, but, you know, but I guess, you know, something that is worthy, and I think Jennifer's, you know, in the future, but, you know, this also gives a little bit more time for the economy to straighten out. You know, I'm just, you know, concerned about, you know, you know, we, every city in this country is wrestling with inflation, paying the bills, you know, the increase in housing assessments is not unique to Virginia Beach and everything. And, you know, I think, you know, once again, I often say, you know, government is like Cliff Duggan, we got to know when to time the jump, you know, perhaps now is enough to time the jump. All right, thanks for the briefing.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for council comments? Sabrina.
As many of you already probably know, you've seen around the region, Juneteenth festivals and celebrations, and we are, of course, Juneteenth is tomorrow. And so the city is certainly observing this national holiday tomorrow. And if you probably already know, the offices are closed for that observation. And I would like to certainly just mention that I did have a chance to attend some of the festivities, and certainly was impressed by what I've saw, the expansion of activities and programming certainly helps us when we look at the goal, because the, the goal of the organizers of this event is to make Virginia Beach the premier location for Juneteenth celebrations. And I think that from what I've seen this weekend, we are certainly well on our way to that goal, to continue on this trajectory. But certainly, I think, the programming that has been added, the different activities certainly that have been incorporated to celebrate this national holiday is certainly phenomenal. And so I certainly want to wish everyone in celebration of Juneteenth tomorrow, just to make sure we acknowledge that, and what it is, and how we look forward to making Virginia Beach that premier location for the celebration or commemoration of what Juneteenth really is, because it does bring everyone together. And so it's, it's certainly a celebration in terms of the community understanding what Juneteenth really is, freedom for those who've been enslaved, and making sure that we know historically going forward, the importance. And so just wanted to make sure and make those comments as it relates to Juneteenth, which we will celebrate tomorrow in observation.
Emilio.
Actually started the kickoff for Juneteenth this past weekend.
Yep.
And so part of that was what we did with the Virginia American Cultural Center in collaboration with B.B. Giggs, which is part of the Department of Cultural Affairs. And we also did that with the Vibes Creative District, and we had it at the Vibes stage, where we ended up having a low jazz, kind of jazz, performance, a little skip, and then back to the performance out in the farmer's market. A lot of people were there, and we thanked the mayor for coming and doing a proclamation. We also had a Congresswoman come out, Congresswoman Higgins, who also shared in that celebration. And then, just to show you, every city is regional, because I left there and I headed to Chesapeake, where they were doing their Juneteenth. And you all heard me mention of us doing two small scholarships of 500. So as a new initiative for the VA ACC, we did our third out for two youth in Chesapeake. One who was going to do arts, and the other sports journalism, because he felt that was the literary part of the arts. Also, I attended a minority business council retreat, and they had it this past Friday from 8:30 until noon. And one takeaway, which I noticed, is their effort. They have a little group, a committee, called an outreach committee. So even though whatever fundings they get from the city, they are reaching out to bring in funds themselves, so they can bring bigger speakers or, you know, different events. And I thought that was, that was unique, because they could always just sit and accept that they are working to bring in funds to expand what they are doing. So hats off, kudos to them.
Thank you. And I think it would be a point of pride for, you know, to note, recognize that, you know, Virginia Beach was the first city in the Commonwealth to declare Juneteenth a holiday.
That is true. And who did it were all wearing masks, but I got the call from the mayor, I wasn't on council then, but he knew I was doing, African-American, says, can you come out? We have someone who has been doing this for a couple of years here, and her name is Mary Dotson. And he wanted us to honor that first proclamation. And then he said, we're going to do a holiday for the whole city. I remember people saying, what? But this mayor did do it. I put on my mask, along with another person, went out to the Sandless Center, presented this to her, and I headed home. But thank you for taking that step among the other mayors.
It was a team, it is, and always will be, a team effort.
That's right.
Barbara.
That's just you.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment as the liaison to the Human Rights Commission to do two things. One is to just share that they had an election and elected a new chair, and that's Dr. Virginia Jankot, who will now serve as the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I congratulate her on her election, and thank her in advance for her service. The Human Rights Commission, as you know, is such an important organization within our city, and for the promotion of human rights across the city and mutual respect and understanding. Mayor Dyer and I have been liaisons to the Human Rights Commission for as long as I've served on council, and I was a member of the Human Rights Commission myself before I joined the council. And I have a great pleasure to work with Dr. Jankot, because she and I also served on the Board of Antemore's Pride prior to her joining the Human Rights Commission. So I know that she'll do a great job. And I also just want to take that opportunity to thank the outgoing chair, Sylvia Strickland. You all know Sylvia, she's been a mainstay on the Human Rights Commission going back to the 90s, you know, serving her time, and then rolling off, and then coming back and serving her time. And Sylvia has been a guiding force and mentor to me when I was on the Human Rights Commission, and a steadying force on the issues of human rights all across the city, promoting human rights for all Virginia Beach residents. Many people have relied upon her. She's led the Human Rights Commission through some very trying times, just within recent memory. Both, both issues internally at the Human Rights Commission, and also some great challenges that we've faced as a city. So I really applaud her for her outstanding public service and dedicated service and leadership at the Human Rights Commission. And I know that she'll continue to mentor and to, and to share her wisdom and experience with the commissioners there and all across the city. I also want to just thank Councilmember Wooton for bringing up the Juneteenth and the Juneteenth event. I look forward to joining at the 24th Street Park tomorrow morning. And I also want to just invite everyone to Pride at the Beach on this coming Sunday, both members of the public who are watching and members of city council and staff. And I really want to thank as well the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and as well Beach Events for their partnership and professional expertise in getting Antemore's Pride, LGBTQ community, and, and everyone ready for this really great event. And I want to thank the council as well for the historic investments they've made into the festival and the event. It'll probably be a growing year for this one, and then a learning year, and look forward to continued success. So that's on Sunday from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM at 31st Street Park.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, consent agenda.
There's two speakers that's going to speak on multiple items, so we'll let them come and speak on, under ordinance resolutions, A15, there's two speakers in support.
Vice Mayor, pass out some communication on that ordinance, number 15.
From the Lenner Civic League to us on council in support of the stoplight at Wynwood, Alaskan Road. And then there's a copy of an email from former councilmember Branch to see manager Duhany, but the same topic related to the project there. So this is both in, but the same topic, that's number 15, ordinance number 15, the cost participation ordinance for the stoplight. And the speakers will be referencing this communication. Thank you. Thank you.
And the two speakers are in support.
Yes.
And then, under planning...
Okay, I wanted to, we didn't start at number one. Can you pull number...
I'm sorry. Anyway, anything else under ordinance resolutions?
Yes, Chris, and then Sabrina, then Barbara, then Sabrina.
Can you pull number one for discussion? Number two. Number four. And you just mentioned number 15 is already, thank you.
Sabrina.
Are we going to pull item two in the formal agenda? Okay, well, I'll save my comments for the formal session.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention number three. I'm going to have a letter on file to abstain from that.
Okay, and I also have a letter on file on number 15. To disclose.
Okay, well, you can do that, because we're going to pull it anyway.
Okay.
And then, under planning, there's one item, and we do have a speaker in opposition, and that is in District 8. So, I guess we'll need to pull that as well. Okay, that's it.
All righty. Okay, Chair, we're going to entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Public contract discussion of warrants of public contracts involving the expenditure of public bonds and the discussion and terms and scope of such contract where the discussion in open session would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy with the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 29, and that's Princess Anne Village CPA. In personnel matters, discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries and disbanding or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1, and that's council appointments for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do we have a motion?
So...
Aye.
Catherine Relichy.
Aye.
Catherine Henley.
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson.
Aye.
Catherine Remick.
Aye.
Catherine Rossammon.
Aye.
Catherine Ralph.
Aye.
Catherine Taylor.
Aye.
Catherine Wood.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're recessed into closed?